Please rise from the pledge.
Pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Councilmember Erby.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trakis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
I move for approval of the Journal of Meetings of November 21st and November 28th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The journals are approved. We have no bed openings, so we'll move communications.
Mr. Chair, there are tax compromises, zoning matters, or any bridge matters this evening, so I'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number 1, 3rd District, receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 2, 7th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor.
So ordered.
Item Number 3.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number 4, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 5.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item Number 6, and that will be the order.
Item Number 7, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number 8, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number 9, 3rd District. Same motion.
So ordered. Please read the add-on.
Item Number 1, 1st District. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 2, 3rd District. Same motion.
So ordered. I report to county executive, I report to special committees, and proceed to the public forum.
We have eighteen speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium when your name is called. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, address the chair, and state your name and address for the record. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Jessie Quinlan.
Good evening, honorable chairmen and women of the council. My name is Jessie Quinlan, and I reside in the 4th District within St. Louis County. I am a forensic scientist in the Biology and DNA Unit of the Police Crime Lab, and have worked in the lab for the past four and a half years. All analysts within the lab are required to have at least a bachelor's degree, and routinely participate in continuing education to stay current in our respective specialties in accordance with our extensive accreditation. The Biology and DNA Unit specifically is responsible for processing evidence collected from crime scenes for biological fluids, including semen, saliva, and blood, and efforts to obtain DNA profiles that will aid in criminal investigations. Not only does our work lend hand to the conviction of violent offenders and exonerations of innocent people, but to providing answers to those individuals and families who have fallen victim to horrific crimes. We are subject to testify in a court of law on cases that can result in life imprisonment and even capital punishment. What makes us truly unique is our ability to keep an objective eye and remain free of personal emotion when processing cases such as child sexual assaults, multi-victim homicides, missing person cases, and homicides of law enforcement officers, to name a few. We are not considered essential employees as officers are; however, we are subject to be called to duty at any time when there is concern for the safety of the general public. It is our privilege and our duty to serve the county and the ninety surrounding municipalities. Although we are held to high ethical standards and have been tasked with the responsibility of handling such significant evidence, we are compensated far below our worth. In 2013, the Milliman-Pays study revealed that forensic scientists in our labs are at sixty-eight percent of the market average for forensic scientists, the lowest of all police employees studied. It is reasonable to assume that we are further compressed now in the year 2017. Although I have only dedicated four and a half years to the lab thus far, the struggles -- excuse me -- the struggles of those who have gone before me sets the example for my future. New employees have been hired at markedly higher rates than veterans of the lab who have gone for years without not only merit but cost of living raises as well. The lack of organization in our current pay scales will only create problems in lab efficiency, case throughput, and morale amongst employees. With the amount of taxpayer dollars that have been invested in our meticulous training and new laboratory, it is imperative that we have competitive salaries that attract seasoned employees to stay. Through our collective bargaining process, a pay matrix was created based off the Milliman-Pays study. Although it brings us slightly below the market average for forensic scientists, the rate is significant and, for lack of better words, life-changing. Thank you for your time and consideration. I love my work, and I'm honored to be a part of the St. Louis County Police Department family. We are simply asking to be compensated in a way that is parallel to our value to the citizens of St. Louis County. I encourage the council to review the crime lab pay matrix that has been provided and to tour our lab that we are so proud of, and wish each of you and your families a very happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Martin.
Good evening, county council members. My name is Catherine Martin. I'm a resident of the 6th District within St. Louis County. I've been employed by the St. Louis County Police Department Crime Lab as a forensic scientist for over five years. Prior to working at our crime lab, I held the same position with the Illinois State Police for just over four years. Between the Illinois State Police and the St. Louis County Police Crime Lab, I have over two years of training in Biology and DNA, which consisted of practical and written exams, oral boards, and mock casework. I have a bachelor's degree in Biology and a minor in Chemistry from Loyola University in Chicago, and a master's degree in Biology from Washington University in St. Louis. I have invested time and money in my education in order to further my career at the St. Louis County Crime Lab. As forensic biologists and DNA analysts, we perform tests on a variety of biohazardous crime scene materials, including but not limited to semen, saliva, and blood from cases such as robbery, sexual assaults, and homicides, just to name a few. We have been trained to operate instruments in order to extract DNA evidence and obtain profiles that we use for comparison to determine the likely source of a stain. We conform to accreditation standards, policies, and procedures. We write reports, train other forensic scientists, and regularly communicate with police officers and attorneys to explain analyses, results, and conclusions. We also testify in court when needed. One very important tool that we use to aid our police officers and their investigations is our DNA database, CODIS, which stands for the Combined DNA Index System. Only qualified analysts can use this database to search DNA profiles obtained from crime scene evidence against DNA profiles from other crime scenes and from convicted offenders and arrestees. For example, in 1994, a sixty-eight-year-old woman and St. Louis County resident, Leila Warner, was gardening in her backyard. When she came back inside, she was raped and strangled with a vacuum cord by an unknown individual. The murder went unsolved for years, until 2006, when routine testing of prison inmates' DNA connected the crime to an individual named Stanley Johnson, who had previously been convicted of burglary and stealing. He is currently serving a life sentence for the murder, which may have remained unsolved to this day without the help of forensic scientists in our lab and the DNA database. From 2012 through December 1st of this year, our lab has had over thirteen hundred CODIS hits, which is a match that aids in unsolved criminal investigation. I am a forensic scientist, but I'm also a parent, as many of us are at the crime lab. I have three children, the oldest of whom I have with me here tonight, my son Jonathan. Many of us choose to come to work at the lab five days per week while our kids are at school and daycare because we take pride in the job that we do for the citizens of St. Louis County and the aid that we provide to our police officers. After the cost of my school loans and the rising cost of childcare, I bring home approximately $300 per month, which does not even cover groceries for our family of five. This also drastically reduces my ability to save money or supplement my retirement savings. The Milliman-Pays study performed almost five years ago revealed that we are approximately sixty-eight percent of the market average of forensic scientists, the lowest of all police positions studied. Without competitive wages, at some point, it isn't going to make sense staying at this job with the rising cost of living and tuition. As highly-trained scientists, we have other career choices in St. Louis that will pay a lot more money, but we choose to stay at the St. Louis County Crime Lab.
That's thirty-three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Because for us, this isn't just a job, it's a career. In closing, I worry for the future of the lab and possible turnover of qualified analysts without the changes that have been proposed in the well-researched pay matrix which has been presented, especially with the amount of time and money it takes to train just one forensic scientist. All we are asking is that we are paid fairly for the job that we are doing and the education, training, and experience that this job requires. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dory Lightfoot.
My name's Doug Lightfoot. I am a forty-year employee with St. Louis County Highway Department. I'm a district manager at District 1. I'm here tonight to bring awareness to the council that our staffing is down forty-one positions. They're leaving to other cities which are paying four to five dollars an hour more of starting pay. Our starting pay is twelve twenty-two an hour, and after they get their CDL, it bumps up to fourteen forty-six an hour. Let me give you an example. City of Chestfield is paying eighteen dollars an hour for starting pay. City of St. Charles is starting at twenty-one eighty-five. We're losing our good, well-trained workers that do asphalt, concrete, grass cutting, tree trimming, removal, and snow detail. I am five workers down now, which means I'm five snow drivers down, and it takes about a month to get their CDL training if they don't already have it and if they pass. If you don't pass in three attempts, it starts all over again. We need to adjust our pay by giving cross-the-board raises and reinstating our merit system. Just within ensure our well-trained employees stay, and St. Louis County would encourage a better caliber of worker to seek employment for a future in St. Louis County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is DeMarco Bolton. Mr. Chair, can I start announcing the next speaker, too?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton, we followed by George Hogan.
I'm DeMarco Bolton. I'm an ex-St. Louis County employee. I left you guys about in July of this year. I left because the pay is not there. I mean, I was a concrete supervisor at the Transportation Department, and I lost so many guys. I'm here to speak on behalf of these guys, because I mean, I don't have no stake of being here no more. I'm talking for my guys that I love and became good friends with. The pay is terrible. Out of the fifteen years I've been working here, ten years we've been on the raise freeze. I mean, who will stay around for ten years? I thought that I was going to retire from this company, but I mean, St. Louis County showed me it's not a place to retire from. It's really not a place to even work for. It started off with -- at first, we knew the pay was never good, but you always knew that you had benefits. But now you guys took the benefits from the new guys, so they have no reason to stay. I mean, just think about it. Out of ten -- out of fifteen years, ten of it is no raise, is a pat on the back, good job. Who will stick around? I mean, I know you guys got a budget, but one thing, when I got a budget in my house and something happened, I make it happen. If my transmission go out in my car and I don't have no money in my bank account, I make it happen. You gotta pay these guys. You must pay these guys. Because when I was there, I mean, I was training people once a week. Come in the door, they get their CDL, they gone. I mean, you gotta pay these guys. I mean, we also voters. I mean, and we also Republican and Democrat voters. I mean, and we do see who vote for this budget and who's voting against it. I mean, because, I mean, everybody got a job, and I mean, it is what it is.
Next speaker is George Hogan, followed by Kyle Reese.
Good evening.
Hi, George.
My name is George Hogan. I would like to speak to safety management, loss prevention, risk management. I'm an individual who helps train these individuals who go out on the streets. Obviously, it's not the most dangerous position in St. Louis County, but it is a dangerous position in St. Louis County. Just to give you an example, I'm going to speak a little more plainly. My crew, this summer, we have a sixty-six-year-old man. We have a sixty-year-old man and myself. I personally am shoveling about six, maybe eight, some days sixteen tons by myself. In a hundred-degree weather, over three-hundred-and-fifty-degree asphalt. This is a lot. We really try very hard to do our job. At the end of the day, we're soaked head to toe. And it is very taxing. It really takes everything we've got to recuperate on the weekend, get back in here on Monday, do it again. Call-outs for individuals who are supervisor threes and above. It takes a lot to train. I'm also a trainer. I am on the Safety Committee. We try to improve as much as we possibly can. The hazards are out there. It's just very, very difficult for us. I would like to go ahead and hand you this next thing for Kyle. This is the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics for the current pay around the United States for the same position we have. Also, in the back, you'll see a Cost of Living Index. I know Social Security is going up by two percent this year, so it's okay. I can hand this to somebody, pass it down.
I don't want to take too much of your time, but I would really like to say, I see these guys out here every single day trying, and it is very, very taxing work, and it is dangerous work. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Reese is the next speaker, followed by Jeff Heine.
Hello, I'm Kyle Reese. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I stand before you humbled. It is a sobering and intimidating endeavor to stand before you and talk about finances for an entire department. I really appreciate the opportunity. The first thing I want to say is how much of an honor it is to represent my work group. It's a group that I'm very proud to be a part of. Even with the high turnover rate and growing unrest with financial compensation, they still continue to produce at an extremely high level. That being said, for the first time since I started working for the county almost ten years ago, I feel stymied by the current financials and employee turnover rate that the Department of Transportation is going through. There has been growing unrest and disappointment among my coworkers. Over the last ten years, we have only received a raise three times between 2013 and 2015, and all three of those raises were three percent or less. I work for Operations District 3, and between June of 2012 and June of 2016, we lost one employee to another municipality. In the eighteen months since, we've lost five of our twenty-two-man work group to other municipalities, and that is a direct result of the lack of raises and financial compensation. The amount of turnover is tough enough to deal with, but the major problem that we have right now is that we are losing our more experienced and skilled employees to entry-level positions at other municipalities. Take Bill Gardner. Bill was a lead at our West County District. He was extraordinarily valuable to the district. In April, he left the county for the O'Fallon Parks Department because of pay. As an eight-year veteran of the county who had received two promotions since being hired on full-time, Bill went from making sixteen nineteen an hour as lead to making seventeen twenty an hour at the entry level of O'Fallon Parks. He will also receive a hundred-dollar Christmas bonus and a raise in April at his one-year As a matter of fact, O'Fallon is so proud of hiring Bill Gardner away from the county that they brag about it in a YouTube video. It's a whole thing. Bill calls himself, quote, "a winner" in the video, while I am extremely happy for Bill. Watching that video is one of the most deflating things I've ever watched. Now, the numbers are exhausting. I could stand up here and rattle them off. I only have three minutes, forty-three seconds left, and that's -- no one wants to hear just numbers being rattled, so I'll give you the Cliff Notes version. When compared to other municipalities in the area, county employees make fourteen percent less to start than any of those other municipalities on average, and that number holds steady across the board as you go through the promotional ladder. Within the next couple of weeks, we plan on putting together an email package with all the numbers that reflect the pay discrepancy in the county as compared to other local municipalities. We will also add the YouTube video from the O'Fallon Parks Department about Bill Gardner. We beg you to please look over the information, watch the video, and empathize with our plight. There's nothing on earth that we could ask for, and we would greatly, greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Jeff Heine, followed by Vince Salim.
Good evening. Thank you for giving this forum to speak. Since Kyle took a little -- a couple of seconds of mine, I'll go ahead and make this quick. My name is Jeff Heine. I'm a district manager for the West County Operations Division. I've been at St. Louis County for over thirty-two years. I started as a laborer and worked my way up through St. Louis County. So the opportunities back then were there if you focused and did what you're supposed to do. The work group behind me, we represent new employees and tenured employees, so it's not just the newer employees. We go from, you know, people that have been here a year to people that have been here thirty years. DeMarco is a perfect example. He was -- I managed DeMarco at District 2, which is the mid-county Dorset facility. An outstanding employee. Always, you know, would have something positive to say, was a very well-rounded, good skillset employee. It's typical of how it happens that we get these employees, we train them so well, and get them up to speed, and they leave. So it's becoming an epidemic in the Operations Division, and I don't know how we're going to stop it. But as a manager, it's difficult when you're training people, you know, just constantly, it's cyclical, where you have people that come in, they leave, you train again. Like Doug was saying, a CDL, we invest a lot of time, they use our equipment, St. Louis County's equipment, to get the CDL. So we have a vested interest in the CDL for our employees, for snow fighting, for everything else, for driving to get asphalt. It's something that it seems like we're providing a platform, we're getting the CDL for people, we're giving them enough experience to where they can put on a resume at these other municipalities, saying, "I have a Class A CDL, I've got experience in asphalt, concrete, whatever it is," and they take them. And I've spoken personally to two district managers in municipalities around West County. Both of them echoed the same thought. They said, "We'd love to get county workers because they're trained well and they fall in seamlessly to what they do." It's just, it's getting to the point where it's just really hard for myself, supervisors, and George, other employees that help train these guys. I mean, it's exhausting, the level of training, the job they have that we have is very dangerous. I mean, they're working at times on roads a foot away from traffic going forty miles an hour. Newer people, a lot of times newer employees are flagmen until they get experience. Flagmen are probably the most important people in the job. They're your last line of defense. You're in a work zone, your back's turned, you're doing work, so it's, we have to train these people the right way because our lives are in line. And most of us know that nowadays, the general public is busy on the phone, they're distracted doing something else.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
How many?
Can you wrap it up?
Sure. Okay.
Three minutes.
Okay. It's a -- and I think you get the point. I'm saying the same thing that everybody else is saying, and I'm experiencing from the upper management level, and it's really hard. So I appreciate your time, and hopefully you can help us in this matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Vince Salim. Vince Salim, followed by Mark Hayden.
My name is Vince Salim. Obviously, I work for the county. I'll just leave you with one figure. Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. That's the difference between working for St. Charles as a beginner or working here in the county. Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour. Who wouldn't move? It's a lot of money. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Hayden, followed by Kira Braxton.
Good evening.
Mark.
I started working for St. Louis County in 2014 as a corrections officer, entry-level position. On May 21st, 2017, I was promoted to the -- promoted from that correction officer position to a caseworker within the MacArthur Safety and Justice Program. The key word here is promoted. At that time, I was moved from a position that was paid fifteen sixty-five an hour to a position that was paid seventeen forty an hour. Under the new current proposal, and we were just in the budget meeting talking about this, it was mentioned that this would be a lateral transfer. That is actually not completely true. If I was to be given the three percent that is being talked about, my pay was going to move from seventeen forty an hour to seventeen ninety-two an hour, approximately twenty-five cents under what a correction officer off of probation would be paid. Imagine what that's like for somebody who's been here five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Why is it a problem that we're being promoted? Why are we not getting paid equally to what we need to be paid? There are some people there that are not even doing caseworker work, they're doing other jobs, they've been there over twenty years. They deserve to be compensated equally. In a recent budget meeting, we were talked about us having supervised over five thousand offenders throughout the county. Most of us deal with felony-level offenders. I currently supervise over fifty felony-level offenders, some of them on probation, some of them just simply charged with crimes. We are already dealing with overpopulation in the jail. If some of those people were to be back in the jail and we were unable to keep them out, we would definitely be overpopulated. We're already short-staffed in the jail, and what happens is, case managers are pulled and allowed to work overtime at correction officer pay to work in that position to help deal with the short staff and overwork. Imagine what that's like if we didn't, if we weren't involved. We deal with some of the most dangerous individuals that the county sees fit to be moved back out into the population, and we, our main goal is to lower recidivism, lower incarceration rates, promote safety in our communities, and help get people back on track. Getting three percent, if that is the number that is being worked on, would not encourage people to take the positions that I took. If I was to take a demotion, I stand to make more money. There are many people that could ask for demotions that would take significantly more money if they took that demotion, some people over two dollars. Please take a look at this and take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Kira Braxton, followed by Mary Hootland.
Good evening. My name is Kira Braxton. I've spoken before you all a couple of times over these last few weeks. I've been with Justice Services for nine years and nine months. Let me start by saying, our director announced last Friday to our department in an email that he's retiring January 1st, 2018. In the next twenty-five, twenty-six days that he has left, we want him to fight for the fifty-eight of us. Not some of the fifty-eight, not a few of the fifty-eight, but all of the fifty-eight. That's what we're asking. Our job classes range from lobby clerks, bondi clerks, mailroom, accountant threes, accountant fours, accounting supervisors, again, case managers, office service reps. I mean, we're -- the fifty-eight is a full gamut of support staff that's important to our department. And I've stated before, in the last two times that I spoke before you all, that Justice Services is a department of one, not some. Having said that, our upper management have conveniently adopted the word "compression" from the police department. Compression exists in our department with the lower classes. When you have so many people that are on the same level, that have been on the same level for years, not moving up, and new people come in on that same level. That's two-hundred-and-sixty-eight lower-paying jobs that are dealing with compression, like Mark just spoke about. Not the twelve jobs of upper management. They are all currently well within their pay ranges. There's no need to go up. The one of them that's at the highest is seven percent from making ninety-one thousand dollars a year, but they want to move that up to sixteen percent to make even more than the top of your pay grade, which we understand that we have when we start these jobs. We're tired. We didn't think that we had to be here. We didn't think that our voices needed to be heard. We just really thought that they would fight for us. The director just got through saying in the budget meeting that he fought for that sixteen percent for those twelve individuals, and a three percent for us, he didn't have a say in it, he didn't put a say in it. He was asked directly again today, what would he suggest, and he couldn't give a number. Well, we have emailed this, and I was asked, by the way, to speak on behalf of those fifty-eight employees of mine. We sent you all this packet today, we sent a packet last week, and we did the numbers. We showed you what three percent means, what ten percent means for us, and what ten to sixteen percent means for us. The lowest-paid person would receive four thousand dollars over the next five years The lowest-paid person would receive four thousand dollars over the next five years if this budget goes through. The highest-paid person would receive sixty-three thousand and eighty dollars over the next five years if this budget goes through. How is that fair? I thank you for you all's time.
Next speaker is Mary Houtland, followed by Carrie Portell.
Hello, my name is Mary Houtland, and I'm a mental health provider for the Department of Public Health in Corrections Medicine. I have worked for St. Louis County for over sixteen years as a clinical social worker. I am also a county resident, taxpayer, and voter. I'd like to ask all of you a question, what's the longest you've gone in your career without getting a raise? One year? Three years? Five years? I haven't received a pay increase since George W. Bush was in office, that's twelve years to be exact. My current salary is twenty-five percent below market value compared to other correctional settings, and I'm paid twenty percent less than others with my same job title here in St. Louis County with the same experience that I have. In fact, my pay is barely above a new hire in my department who just got his LCSW, I got mine in nineteen ninety-six. I am here tonight not just to advocate for myself, but for my coworkers in Corrections Medicine who are also undercompensated for the difficult work they do. We are direct care providers to the inmates and work side-by-side with correctional staff in the delivery of services. We too are public safety officers. We are the first responders for all medical and mental health emergencies in our facility. We are the first person an inmate sees at the door of the jail and the people who provide emergency treatment before the paramedics arrive. The Proposition P money is designated for public safety officers. As it stands right now, Corrections Medicine is the only public safety office, are the only public safety officers in St. Louis County that are not included in a budget for a wage increase. I'd like to ask all of you why we're being overlooked. We are an integral part of the Justice Center process, I respectfully request that we be included in the Proposition P funding. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Carrie Portell, followed by Marquita Fletcher.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Portell, and I have been a nurse at the Justice Center for going on nine years. When most people think of nurses who work for the Department of Health, they think of nurses working in one of the clinics. For correctional medicine nurses, we work in the jail. We are hired to care for individuals who have been arrested for numerous felonies, misdemeanors. Every single person brought to the jail is seen by a nurse prior to being booked in. It is the nurse's responsibility to determine if the person is fit for confinement. The individual may be hostile, belligerent, suicidal, drunk, or high on a wide range of substances. The nurse must assess, collaborate, and ultimately make a call that affects staff from multiple agencies and facilities. It can be quite overwhelming. Several nurses have been physically assaulted, and several loaded guns have been brought into the facility and have not been found until after seen by the nurse. We are public safety officers by its definition. We are first responders, when an officer calls a Code One, we must immediately respond. We are the first medical on scene, we may not know the nature of the emergency. Every nurse is to respond, and it is required that the RNs in our facility are ACLS certified and able to perform advanced cardiac life support. We are not in a hospital or clinic where doctors respond. It is up to the nurses to assess and collaborate each emergency. We are the first responders before nine-one-one is ever called. We may be responding to an attempted suicide, a seizure, an unresponsive inmate, or someone faking an illness to get sent to the ER and attempt an escape. We must make quick and prudent decisions knowing potential consequences for a bad call. Nurses in our facility also pass medications and pods which house up to ninety inmates. A nurse can be responsible for three to five pods. There is one officer per pod. The officer is required to see the nurse, which means while the nurse is passing meds, the officer is also carrying on with their duties. If a fight were to break out, the only protection the nurse has is a small exam room to get into after pushing the medication cart inside. We have a medication cart that can weigh up to two-hundred pounds, and one of those carts was pushed over by an inmate. Nurses have no protection such as pepper spray, a radio, or a phone to use to call for help, only our voice. We are put into potentially dangerous situations every day. We have a difficult time attracting and hiring nurses. The pay is low and the risks are high. Please realize our duties involve being first responders and make us a rescue squad. The correction medicine staff deserve to be recognized in giving a raise from the Prop P funds.
Next speaker is Marquita Fletcher, followed by Trina Bland.
Good afternoon, good evening. Hi, my name is Marquita Fletcher, and I'm a registered medical assistant.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, ma'am, could you pull the mic down closer?
Okay. Hi, my name is Marquita Fletcher, and I'm a registered medical assistant at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. I've been with St. Louis County Correction Medicine for five years. I wanted to talk to you about my experience at the jail. My job daily is to go upstairs to the inmate housing unit on every floor, including the maximum security floor where the most dangerous inmates are housed. I obtain vital signs, read PPDs, and get their weights. When I'm in the housing unit, it's just me and one officer with up to eighty, ninety inmates out and about. The officers are attending their routine housing business while I am seeing inmates. Please, please allow me to give you an example of a recent stressful incident that put me in the middle of a dangerous situation. I was in the housing unit on the maximum security floor and a fight broke out. The officer called for assistance and the lieutenant came in, sprayed the inmate who was fighting, and I was there, and I also got pepper sprayed. I was sent to the hospital via ambulance after nine-one-one was called, I missed several days of work. Our safety can be compromised daily. We are also in exam room, uh, exam rooms along with inmates charged with murder, rape, and other serious crimes. And while we're providing medical care, daily we have to look over our shoulders and watch our backs because we see these inmates in our neighborhoods where we live and out in public. We are, we are face-to-face and up close with the, with the inmates with our handcuffs. Please consider correction medicine staff with determination distribution of the Proposition B funds. We are public safety officers. Nursing staff have the first interest with every inmate that arrives at the Justice Center. We, we see them before paramedics whenever there's an emergency. We are first responders and we are the rescue squad. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next speaker is Trina Bland, followed by Amy Jansen.
Good evening, County Council, my name is Trina Bland. I employ with the Department of Health as a registered medical assistant and have worked at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center for fourteen years. I would like to tell you about, a little bit about some of my duties. We have inmates that come into the Justice Center with wounds and will also receive wounds while at the Justice Center. One of my responsibilities is to do the dressing changes for the wounds. One day in two thousand and seven, I was doing a dressing change on an inmate who attacked and assaulted me when he came into the clinic for his daily dressing change. It was a male nurse that came into the exam room and pulled him off of me. Due to that assault, I was off of work for a month, seeing a psychiatrist and taking prescribed meds to help me overcome my fear of returning to work. To this day, when taking care of an inmate, if they move in a certain way or become loud and argumentative, I become very anxious and nervous. That same inmate that attacked and assaulted me in nineteen ninety-two put out a gun in a courtroom, started shooting, killing his wife and shooting four others. When we, the correction medicine staff, are taking care of our responsibilities in the housing units, infirmary, clinic, and intake, we are not only the first response responders, but also the public safety officer. The correction medicine staff at the Justice Center are putting our physical and mental well-being in danger each and every day. We work twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Please consider the staff when distributing the Prop B funds. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Amy Jansen, followed by Kathy Duffy.
Good evening, my name's Amy Jansen, I live in Eureka in St. Louis County. I've been a nurse for sixteen years and I've worked for correction medicine for nine years. I'm the supervisor of our twenty-eight-bed infirmary and the clinic desk where the inmates come to receive medical and psychiatric care. The management team interviews applicants for medical assistants, LPNs, and RNs. When we have completed our questions during the interview, we ask the applicant if they have any questions about our unique environment. Three frequently asked questions are, what is the chance of being assaulted by an inmate? We explain the circumstances surrounding the incidents that have occurred, and while we do have our own built-in security, we must be cognizant of all times of our surroundings. Second question, what time of crime, type of crimes have the inmates been accused of committing? We explain that our facility is a transitional facility, not a prison. The inmates that are at the jail house to go to court and either be sentenced to prison or be released to the street. The crimes that have been, have allegedly been committed include child support, traffic tickets, drugs, murder, rape, child molestation, and armed criminal action. Excuse me. We give examples of the type of patients the applicants may be taking care of in the infirmary. A man who tried to sell his nine-year-old on eBay. A young man who just received a life sentence plus forty years for several counts of murder, robbery, and kidnapping. And a woman who tried to burn her house down with her husband in it. After this information sinks in, the third question is, is the salary negotiable? We have to say no, the salary's not negotiable. At that point, we know that our inability to be flexible with our salary offer will inhibit our ability to compete in the job market. That is why we have ten vacant positions that still need to be filled, leaving our existing staff responsible for giving quality care to over thirteen-hundred inmates. To recruit and maintain quality importance employees, it is essential for corrections medicine to be considered in the distribution of funds for Proposition P.
Next speaker is Kathy Duffy, followed by Ms. Reynolds.
Hello, my name is Kathy Duffy. I am the nursing manager at the jail. I've worked at the jail for five years, and I've been the nursing manager for about a year. I've been a nurse for forty years, and I've worked at all of the jails in St. Louis. I've worked at St. Charles County, St. Louis City, and in Hillsborough. In my current position as the nursing manager, I make about ten cents an hour less than I made as a staff nurse on the night shift at St. Louis City five years ago. I listened to the concerns of my staff and felt very conflicted about speaking this evening because I'm also very aware and very, and I am responsible for the Corrections Medicine budget. You've heard a lot about the risks that we have in this job, and I think we all came into this job knowing that we're caring for inmates and that there are some safety risks associated. I would like to talk about how we impact public safety every day. We are the first responders for emergency situations in the jail, and we've responded to over a hundred-and-twenty emergencies in the jail this year. Whereas we are responsible for initiating the emergency care and then the decision about what kind of care, or follow-up care that the inmate needs, if they need to go to a hospital, if they need to stay in the jail and be seen by our medical providers, or if we can give them the care that they need. In the intake department, we assess more than sixty arrestees a day. The nurses have to make the decision about whether that inmate is able to be housed in the jail or is too sick to be confined. Our nurses do a very detailed assessment and make good decisions about the care that's needed for our arrestees. Our environment is as safe as it can be because we do have excellent corrections officers, but there's no jail that can guarantee that everyone will always be safe. We've had a few incidents where nursing staff had, have had to assist. We recently had a couple incidents where inmates attacked an officer and the officer's radio was knocked out of the, out of reach. In both incidents, the nurses, nursing staff had to call for assistance. It's very rare that nurses have physical involvement in altercations, but we do still need to be support staff for our officers. Our inmate and patient population today have many more medical problems that have, have not been addressed before arriving here, including patients with mental illness, a variety of medical illnesses, and especially severe drug addiction. We make every effort to make sure our patients with, with severe mental illness have medications and follow-up treatment when they leave the jail. We have a robust program for our drug-addicted inmates to make sure that they receive a vivitral shot, and before they leave the jail, we connect them to a follow-up treatment program. These are public safety issues because our mentally ill patients will commit another crime if they don't have their medications, and our drug-addicted patients will die of overdose or they will steal money to get, steal to get money for drugs and will again be incarcerated. We have mental health staff who also do assessments according to the Prison Rape Elimination Act. I have a lot of respect for our staff.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Kathy, can you wrap up?
Yeah, we currently have more than ten openings for, for nursing staff right now. We have a higher percentage of registered nurses than I believe we need in the jail. However, because of the pay structure, it's easier to recruit RNs and LPNs. If the pay structure were changed, it would be, we would have an easier time recruiting LPNs and we could, we could certainly save some money in our budget. Currently, our max hire rate is not comparable to nursing jobs in St. Louis, so nurses with one-year experience makes the same as a nurse who has many years of experience. We recently also had HR contact us to ask for reasons for the people who left because, who quit because we have such a high turnover rate, most of those were because of the salary. And, you know, they made it look like it was our fault that people were leaving. Certainly, our, our pay scale is affecting our ability to, to do our job. I would ask that we be considered far part of the Proposition, Proposition P funds.
It's a question. Yes. Did anyone, um, on your behalf, on behalf of the corrections medicines, uh, medicine, I was trying to put two words together, on behalf of corrections medic, medicine, have anyone speak for you guys to get this raised prior to you guys coming to us?
Yes, Dr. Condon.
Dr. Condon too, and who did he try to get that raised?
I'm not sure, is he, is he here tonight?
I don't think so.
I don't know who he spoke with.
So he tried to get you all included, or have you guys be included in the Prop P money?
He did try to get us included.
And what happened?
I don't know, he, he just told me that he did testify and that he wasn't a part of the, in the decision-making process for the Proposition P money.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Reynolds, and Mr. Chair, if we could have the speaker give us her first name when she comes up, because I'm not sure of what it is. And then our final speaker will be Vince Jackson.
Good evening, my name is Vicki Reynolds. I've been a nurse for twenty-five years.
I'm sorry, ma'am, V-I-C-K-I?
V-I-C-K-I. I'm a registered nurse at Buzz Westfall Justice Center. I think the rest of my friends and everyone I work with has pretty well addressed everything. I'll be very brief. I work with thirty-five other nurses, medical assistants, mental health professionals. Many are surprised to learn that we take care of the health needs of approximately fourteen-hundred inmates, including two pods of females, often pregnant, heroin addicted. We take care of juvie as well, and we are, all the RNs are trained in advanced cardiac life support, and are the first medical professionals to arrive when a Code One is called. I personally took part in one such code when an individual attempted to hang himself, which unfortunately does happen. Those attempts are made frequently at our jail. On our arrival to the code, this man was lifeless. Myself and the rest of the code staff did initiate the call to nine-one-one. We were successful in administering CPR and initiating IV access before nine-one-one arrived. This man left our facility breathing on his own due to our efforts. We are very crucial team members of a rescue squad as well as, uh, public safety officers. We ask that we be considered in the distribution of Proposition P funds. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Vince Jackson.
Good evening, my name is Vince Jackson. I'm a maintenance driver lead in the, uh...
I'm a maintenance driver lead in the highways and traffic division. I'm one of the boots on the ground. Current situation with the leads and supervisors, the teachers and trainers on the road is our crews now resemble revolving door. Once a young man or young woman obtains a CDL license and gain six months to a year of experience in roadway maintenance and become familiar with certain construction applications, they are armed with a new skill set that is in high demand. More times than not, they leave the county for one of the municipalities or one of the utility companies that are on average paying a much higher wage. In essence, we have become the training ground for the munis and utilities. We work in extreme conditions, whether it be extreme heat or extreme cold, snow, rain. We are out there making the roads safe for the citizens of St. Louis County. I don't think it's a misnomer to say that we are underappreciated for our contribution to the infrastructure effectiveness in the region. We are an important part of the safety puzzle in St. Louis County. And currently, our wages do not reflect that appreciation. Unlike many county employees, we are required to respond twenty-four seven to rectify any dangerous or emergency conditions that may occur. Thank you for your time.
This concludes public forum. We'll proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number three forty-eight introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance authorized the county executive to execute a contract with Action Auction Central LLC for auctioneering services. Bill number three forty-nine introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorized the county executive to execute a contract except for renewals with Security Services USA Incorporated for security services at the Met Center. Bill number three fifty introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance amending chapter one oh seven title one, St. Louis County revised ordinance since nineteen seventy-four as amended purchasing by enacting and adding there to one new section pertaining to minority and women-owned business enterprise program.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on just a second.
Do we ask for some quiet here? Will we take five-minute break?
We're gonna let the room clear, but we ask you all to try and be quiet as you go. Thank you. Um, three thirty-eight? Okay.
Perfection of bills, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, perfection calendar.
Bill number two ninety-six introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, please hold on the, please hold bill two ninety-six and that will be the order.
Bill number three oh five introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Uh, please hold on the order of business.
Uh, bill number three oh five is held.
Bill number three oh seven introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Uh, please hold on the order of business.
Uh, bill number three oh seven is held.
Bill number three fourteen introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to hold bill number three fourteen and three fourteen will be held.
Bill number three fifteen introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, same motion, bill number three fifteen will be held.
Bill number three sixteen introduced by Councilmember Page.
Same motion, uh, three sixteen is held.
Bill number three seventeen introduced by Councilmember Page.
Same motion, three seventeen is held.
Bill number three eighteen introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number three eighteen. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three eighteen is perfected.
Bill number three nineteen introduced by Councilmember Page. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Um, I move to hold bill number three nineteen and three nineteen will be held.
Bill number three twenty introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to perfect bill number three twenty.
Second.
Roll call, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill number three twenty is perfected.
Bill number three twenty-two introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to perfect bill number three twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three twenty-two is perfected.
Bill number three twenty-four introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three twenty-four.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three twenty-four is perfected.
Bill number three twenty-five introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, move to perfect bill number three twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three twenty-five is perfected.
Bill number three twenty-eight introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to perfect bill number three twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three twenty is perfected.
Bill number three thirty-one introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three thirty-one is perfected.
Bill number three thirty-four introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three thirty-four is perfected.
Bill number three thirty-five introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three thirty-five is perfected.
Bill number three thirty-six introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three thirty-six is perfected.
Bill number three thirty-seven introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, this is the bill that sets the tax levy for twenty eighteen. Is that right?
No.
Highway capital construction.
Then we will, uh, that's a wrong bill. Okay. Move to perfect, um, no, let's hold this one. Move to hold bill number three thirty-seven.
Bill number three forty-two introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three thirty-two. Three forty-two.
Second.
All in favor of perfection of bill number three forty-two?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three forty-two is perfected.
Bill number three forty-three introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, move to perfect, uh, bill number three forty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three forty-three is perfected.
Bill number three forty-four introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number three forty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three forty-four is perfected.
Bill number three forty-five introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move to perfect bill number three forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three forty-five is perfected.
Bill number three forty-six introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move to perfect bill number three forty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three forty-six is perfected. Um, final passage.
Substitute bill number one.
I move to hold substitute bill number one for bill number one eighty-three.
Bill number one, uh, substitute bill number one to bill number one eighty-three is held.
Bill number three twenty-one introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three twenty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three twenty-one is finally passed.
Bill number three twenty-three introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three twenty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three twenty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three twenty-three is finally passed.
Bill number three twenty-six introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three twenty-six.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three twenty-six, there are seven ayes.
Uh, bill number three twenty-six is finally passed.
Bill number three twenty-seven introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, uh, bill number three twenty-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three twenty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three twenty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number three twenty-nine introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three twenty-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three twenty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three twenty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three thirty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three thirty, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-two introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three thirty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three thirty, three thirty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-two is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-three introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number three thirty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three thirty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-three is finally passed.
Bill number three thirty-eight introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, this is the bill that sets the tax levies, um, for the next cycle starting in twenty eighteen. Had a couple of council members tell me that they wanted to talk about this a little more. Um, if that's the case, we can hold it for another week. If it's not, we'll pass it.
I'd like it held personally.
I'd like it too.
Okay. Bill number three thirty-eight will be held.
Bill number three thirty-nine introduced by councilmembers Tracus and Harder.
I'll move for final passage, bill number three thirty-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number three thirty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number three thirty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three forty introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage, bill three forty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?[1667.86]